I would like to amend the agenda. I would like to move the Chair's report to the top of the order. And including in the Chair's report, I'm going to add a B. And that is going to be Board Member Conflict of Interest. So the agenda will be the Chair's report, then Public Comments. And then we will continue on.
Should we need personnel matter if you don't have an executive session?
I don't have a personnel matter.
Well, Board Member too.
Not, we can discuss it when we get to it. I am going to ask that with the minivan lease update, that there will be a possible action item included. On it. So just to clarify, moving the Chair's report up, including a possible action item on the minivan lease. Uh, minivan and adding a B, Board Member Conflict of Interest. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda? By Susan, second by Leon. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, before we get started, why don't we quickly go around the room? And I guess we have name tags now, so I don't know if we need to do this anymore. Why don't we start with Adam? We'll just go around the room and let everybody know who's here and then we'll move on.
Do appreciate this additions. By Adam Carmichael, Principal Mount Anthony, the Union High School.
Ever forget, you can just look and remember.
So I tried to do it discreet, but that was me cheating.
Chris McBlair, Mount Anthony Union Middle School Principal.
Looked at it too. Did she ever say the right thing? It's Leon Johnson, Board Member.
Tim Payne Superintendent.
Stephanie Mulligan, Board Member.
Katie Aiken, Board Member.
Glenn Thurber, Board Member.
Susan Plaisance, Board Member.
Dave Fredrickson, Board Member.
Kristen Olmstead, Board Member.
Nelson Brownell, Board Member.
You have Board Members.
And we have Beth Wallace, a Board Member, and Scott McNeely, Board Member as well. Okay, the first item on the agenda, the amended agenda is the Chair's report. The, we had a minivan lease update and I'm going to have Renee talk.
And if you can make me a co-host, I can share my screen. Take them in these and pass them around. So after the last meeting. Holly's Department and mine started working through the process of securing a lease. Um, per the outline that the Board gave us, so up to thirty thousand dollars. In not to exceed that. I'm sorry, trying to share at the same time, it's not working. So thirty thousand dollars within three years, all wheel drive vehicle and preferably local if possible. So working through that process, we weren't able to actually close the deal in September. Which pushes out a little bit longer because the incentives change. So been working through the process over the last couple of weeks. We submitted our application for financing. And came back this morning that they couldn't offer the deal through Stevens that had given us the best price option. Because they had presented it as if it was a personal lease. Not for a municipality, because a school district is considered a subdivision or political subdivision of the state of Vermont, we are a municipality. So they quickly ran other options for us, which extended that, and so that's why we're here tonight. It's beyond three years, so the options they gave us were a lease for five years or six years. Both of which would have an option to buy the vehicle outright for a dollar at the end of the lease. So what you have in front of you is just kind of running those numbers with the leasing options. Option number one to lease for the five year term ends up being just over fifty thousand dollars. Six year lease would be fifty-two, two ninety-one. With that, they also gave us an outright purchase option, whether cash or they also gave us financing options too, but the financing is actually more expensive than what lease rates were. So I've also presented here what the cash option was, so for that same vehicle. Forty-three thousand, two thirteen. We also went back. Aspen thankfully from Holly's Department made several calls this afternoon trying to get other just cash options for other minivans. So you had comparative pricing here. We heard back from two. Both of those vehicles were offered as a Toyota Sienna Hybrid. You can see the pricing there, they are all wheel drive vehicles. But neither of them are actually on the lot, both of, both the dealerships are anticipating those vehicles arriving sometime mid-October, if not into early November, so that's going to push those options off. The Chrysler Pacific is actually on the lot and available now with Stevens. So, all of that being said, the three year lease option didn't actually work out. This is what we have available now. You can do with it what you want if you wanted. We basically just can't, can't operate with what the motion was at the last meeting, because it's, it's not an option for us at this point.
Based on your, like where you are now, what would be your recommendation? I mean, what I'm looking at is.
If you're looking just to buy.
But that, I don't know what the, whether.
If you wanted to know the the financing options, so if we were to, instead of just buying outright and paying the forty-three thousand dollars for the vehicle. The five year financing option totals fifty-four thousand. And six year purchase is over fifty-six thousand.
I think Beth Wallace has a question.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's any difference in the service contract or the warranty between the buying outright option or the the five or six years lease up?
No, I mean, they're new vehicles, so it would be the same regardless. You're going to have whatever comes with a brand, they're both brand, or not both, they're all brand new vehicles. Twenty twenty-five models, so they have their standard.
Your standard warranty is three, three years, thirty-six, and then five sixty on the powertrain. So the engine is good, engine and transmission are good to sixty thousand by warranty. If you cash, you can keep them going forever.
I would make the motion that we purchase the Pacifica outright.
I'll second that.
So any discussion?
Well, yes, I had a question before that, even though we were looking at the Pacific in here, looking at the miles per gallon. City and highway compared to the hybrids of thirty-five miles per gallon, we, we, we need to be thinking long term. Even though I, there's no reason why we can't wait. And we, the benefit of Vermont goal is to be hybrid and and totally electric along that line. And here we are going in an opposite direction for that, and, and we don't have to.
I had a similar question, but I don't, and Mike not being here tonight, is this something that we can wait until mid-November, isn't it?
He, he wanted it for, uh, route tomorrow.
I was thinking.
Probably isn't going to happen.
Purchase it today, it's not going to be.
Tax free or is there sales tax?
Oh, no sales tax.
Much rather, you heard me the last time, I'm not going to repeat myself, but to buy it outright is on it, it's an asset that the visitor can depreciate. And it seems like it's something that's instantly available.
I do have to agree with Leon on the hybrid.
I will tell you from a couple of decades in the car business, that October twenty-eighth and November fourteenth is an estimate. At best. Supply chain and just that the other, you got something that's on the ground and ready to go and we have a need for it.
Have a motion.
We do have a motion, so are there any other discussion, is there any other discussion? Motion to approve the Pacifica.
Yeah, so I was just going to speak to the electric option. I wonder, do we have other electric vehicles in the fleets? Do we have charging stations? I know that that's the goal of the state by, I think, twenty thirty-five, but it sounds like we're we're a long way off from that goal on the state level. I just want.
It's not, it's not electric, it's a high.
They don't have to be charged.
But do, I mean, the point of purchasing a hybrid would be that we would charge it, correct?
But you know, from a personal perspective, like, we, we have multiple electric vehicles and they are state does accommodate for, but this does not require charging or like installing a charger or stations. And you know, to Leon's point, it, I mean, the gas mileage is a significant difference. You know, I think the challenge that I have is weighing the like like getting something that will work for the school district this year with, or, you know, and the efficiency, which obviously is better, I think, in the Sienna. You know, but we don't know when we're actually would be able to get it. I think that, that's the challenge that we have to weigh, so I don't, you know. We have a motion, we could amend it, we could, you go ahead.
Are these, how, when this is used, is it going to be for long hauls or is it going to be used majority for short hops to places?
It's my understanding based on last, the last meeting, it's going to be used for potentially both. Is that, I mean.
It'll be used during the school day to have students going to community-based learning opportunities. So it'll remove that barrier for kids who don't have a car of their own to get sites around town and around the surrounding area. And then after school, probably the longer hauls, a golf team playing for a Burton and only taking a handful of kids in a specific situation.
So am I to assume that the short hauls will be the majority of use?
It would be used, yeah, it would be used daily by community-based learning, I would assume. And it will probably be used several days a week by, by the athletic teams.
Any other thoughts? I mean, we have a motion on the table to approve the the purchase of the Pacifica. All in favor? And two on the screen and opposed? Motion carries.
Where do we store this vehicle?
Well, it's my understanding, like based on some conversations with Renee today, that we have vehicles at Mount Anthony, both for maintenance and, you know, other. What did you say we have? Yeah, car present vehicle, I'm not. Okay, we will move on to the, I, the second item, B, which is the Board Member Conflict of Interest. Sandy Foster emailed me today and had identified that there may be or could be the appearance of a conflict with, for her with the hiring of the assistant, the hiring process of the Assistant Superintendent search. So she will not be engaging in Board Member activities until the process is complete. The reason, just to give you clarification, the reason why this is not in executive session is that per our Board Member Conflict of Interest policy, I think it's seven two oh five. It states that when this has been, it will be placed in the meeting. So I just, that is. So that is it, and we can move on to public comments. That consent agenda, we have minutes, warrants, retirements, leave of abstinence, resignations and nominations. Can I have a motion to approve them as presented? There's my Glenn, second by Leon. Any discussion? All in favor? We will move on to finance, there was a treasurer report in August twenty-five. I don't know that I, I just want to confirm, it hasn't been posted, I don't, did not see it. Oh, okay, we haven't, okay. Can I have a motion to the, approve the treasurer report as presented? Motion by Susan.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we'll move on to operations and, you know, under operations.
Yeah, so just a reminder to folks who might be joining us for the first time, our Board Members. We are being purposeful and reporting out for the month. In August, came to talk to you about staffing. September, we're talking to you about building updates, so this is work that was done in the last three to six months. Holly Anderson will be here as the representative, the director for that. Excuse me, next month, we will be talking about student achievement and grant update. And then in November, we'll be talking about special education. So hopefully that helps folks just be aware of the topics that will be coming. Holly was in the banner this morning, so if you read your banner above the fold. A nice, long article about the updates for the elementary school board presentation, so I just want to congratulate her on that. They quoted her early and often, I love reading about that. Susan knows over my Cheerios every morning, I'm copying my banner. So Holly is here this evening, she'll only be speaking about the MAU buildings, because of course, this is the MAU Board. You can, we will be posting a link to her slideshow on the website, so if folks want to see all the buildings, they can do that, and we missed the Arlington School Board meeting last week. The Chair will be rescheduling that, but if folks from Arlington want to check, tune in, they can catch that too. And Holly and I will work on that by the end of this week, the slideshow will be up.
Excellent, thank you friends, I'm going to.
Do I need to make you a co-host if you're asking for?
I took the presentation for the district and just that for you guys. So, thank you friends, I'm so excited as always to talk about our buildings. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Holly Anderson, I'm the Director of Facilities Management and Operations here for the SBSU, and I do have more fun than legally loving it works, so I'm excited to talk about all things construction. Over the last, over the recent past, we've gotten a bunch of different buckets of money. As you guys know, we got a large bucket of money for the Arbester projects to address indoor air quality. And then as a, as an SU, we went over, or we went to different opportunities for grants and prizes, and we got an energy prize from the Department of Energy, it was a hundred thousand dollars to start. And then, once we put our plan in place, we got another check for fifty thousand dollars. The EPA funds were for the electric buses in Arlington, when you guys were talking about the hybrid, my ears hurt. So thank you for that. We also have been working with the state of Vermont to work on our biomass systems to make those as efficient and effective as possible. And always as part of this work, we work in conjunction with Efficiency Vermont to build custom product projects so that they can give us more incentive money. We have a little over a million square feet in the district. The oldest building is eighteen oh nine, was the first operating year, to the middle school, which clearly is newer district. And everything in between, so we have a lot of opportunity for improvement. And then as you'll see, the, we have Arlington buildings, SBSU buildings, and the MAU, can you hear me?
We just recognized some of the kids, that's.
Oh, that was unintentional, I didn't do that, I swear. So as part of the Arbesser funds, we finally added air conditioning to the middle school. The construction of the middle school contemplated air conditioning, so a lot of the pieces and parts were already in place. So we ordered the chillers, installed them. And thank you, Principal, for all your patience during commissioning of the air conditioning system. As always with any construction projects, any construction project. There are always hiccups, and we experienced a lot of them, so thank you very much. Also, I wanted to point out, I invited the Director of MAU facilities, Tony DiNofrio, and I want to thank him for his service, his time here working at the district. And all these efforts would not be possible without him, so thank you. And then at the high school, we also got a number of Arbesser funds. We added air conditioning and ventilation systems to the gym if you were there for graduation. Very exciting. We also added air conditioning ventilation to the gymnasium. And the gymnasium, the cafeteria and the auditorium, so those are now all fully air conditioned and in your air quality standards. In addition to that, we've replaced a roof that we've talked about previously, which I'm happy to report no longer has speed bumps on it. And the, the funds that you approved when last we met, we have received the materials that we got under warranty and fixed the roof, and it's really beautiful, I'm happy to take any of you up there to look at it. The roof drains are also clear, it's exciting. And, yeah, we've got a cafeteria, we did a while ago, but painting new tables, new lighting, all that kind of stuff. So as, working with the state and as part of our master plan, we've gone through and anticipated what the capital expenses moving forward and then the next ten years will be. And so this has all of our schools on it, but you guys are there.
Can you, I'll walk for just a minute, Holly, on that backslide. So for folks who are watching this at home or Board Members who want to go back and look at, I appreciate Holly organizing it. It lists schools on the first column, the replacement value, which folks have pointed out, really, that's all it would cost to replace. That's a state number, so the value of the building, if you have an interest in a specific building. Average need, which is, Holly is anticipation of what you're going to spend on a yearly basis to keep the building up. And then there's a ten-year total, I draw everybody's attention to the bottom right corner. The total, ten-year total is a twenty-two million dollar plus investment. So just, again, we're trying to provide you with information, thinking about budgets as we are going into budget seizing in November and December. And this is a really good, this was, this figures in there for me, because I'm visually in need of this kind of layout, so thank you, Holly.
And knowing this, we have, we have lots of work we have to do throughout the district. These are just some examples of the projects that we know are, we're going to have to manage and take care of in the next ten years. I'm happy to go through them.
Could you highlight just for folks, some of the ones you pointed out for the high school and middle school, please?
Sure, so we still need to go through and do HVAC upgrades. The eighty-four edition has the existing, or the original unit ventilators. So that's about a million dollars for that addition to do all three floors.
The high school?
The high school. So high school, building envelope, some of the glazing, some of the glass is original to the building, so it doesn't it doesn't have all the bells and whistles of new glazing where it's like UV protected and has all the films and argon film.
And they're expensive to replace when they break.
Very much so. EDA upgrades, we still have bathrooms we need to address. The lockers in the, in all of the hallways we ripped out, they had outlived their useful life. So we, we have some bigger things coming up as far as roofs and, and other such projects. Yeah, so I, I wanted to let you guys know as part of Act seven three. The state has put together a, a school construction committee. And I'm excited to be serving on it, so I'll be able to come back to you and talk about progress as the state moves forward, planning where that seventy-three.
I appreciate, I thank Holly for taking time to serve on that. There are four working groups, I think, right now at the state level doing various things. Obviously, school construction has been non-existent in the state of Vermont for over twenty years since the middle school was built. So it's nice to have representation from our district sitting on that committee, I appreciate that.
Is it time for questions? Wait on me, Susan. I, I see the call and I could be wrong, so correct me if I am, that at one point, you presented that Green Mountain Power had some funds for the lighting at Spinelli. I didn't see anything there that was going to need it, and it is need, so why isn't it on those?
Oh, that's excellent, so I'm glad you brought that up, I'm working with.
You knew I would.
I'm like, oh my God, let me talk about this. We're, we're working to put together an energy project that has the Spinelli lights in it. I didn't include them in here, because they would be zero funded. So what we're looking for is a bunch of applicable grants and other funding opportunities, so that it doesn't hit our budget at all. That's the strategy, we went, not that this pertains to this board specifically, but we, that's the tact we took for the Arlington School District to get the four electric buses and the charging infrastructure. It costs the taxpayers of Vermont zero, and we got one point six million in assets. So that's the same thing I'd like to do with Spinelli. Included in Spinelli would be building management system optimization. Replacing of old refrigerators, kitchen accoutrements, like things that are in the boiler rooms and in the back of house that no one will see, no one cares what color they are. But will make a huge difference in how our buildings operate and the efficiency and costs over time. Did I answer your questions, Susan?
Yeah.
Dave's going to follow up, I think.
EDA upgrades, does that include the bleachers you talked about?
Yes, they are ordered, they are coming between, yeah, I'm like, they're, they're coming between the sports seasons.
October, and November third, the Thanksgiving, they will be installed. In between there somewhere, it'll be about a week and a half.
Yeah, so again, with the bleachers, we won't have as many seats, but they will be accessible.
They'll have aisles, they'll have wheelchair accessible seats, and they'll be all electric. For pulling them in and out.
That makes me feel better, I won't have to watch Dave climb the steps in cowboy boots.
My balance isn't as good.
So no, so Susan, that's your point, my hope is to come back to the Board with, with a laundry list of things we'd like to do.
That would be awesome. Can I ask the follow-up question also? Given the changing climate and funding climate, it does, are, like, should we be adding in the cost of like the real cost of things in case that there aren't grants? I mean, because ultimately, we, like, it is, I think, it's not, at some point, it's not a wish, you know. Like, we need some of those upgrades to happen.
Oh, absolutely, and some of and let me answer you in a long, long-winded way, our food circus program is profitable. So we have a bucket of money there that every time we need to replace a dishwasher, a, a reserve. Any of that kind of stuff, we can use those funds to replace it, so it doesn't come out of our operating capital. This is okay.
I think there's more fitting about the different ways to, to the sports facility.
Yeah, so I, I'm always looking for different ways to skin the cat. To answer your question, yes, if we are not successful, we'll have to look at those in different, in future budgets. But right now, I'm, I'm operating under, if it's free, it's for me, and I would like as much to get as many assets as possible while they're still available.
Any other questions? There you go, great.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to policies, the first one is adopt for policy six one nine oh. Holiday observance. I have a motion to approve six one nine oh as presented. By Glenn, second by Leon. Any discussion? All in favor? The next one is 1025, public complaints about personnel. This is to adopt this policy, but can I have a motion to approve this policy as presented? Any discussion? All in favor? We have policy 1090, use of school facilities. This is to adopt the policy, can I have a motion to approve as presented? One second, but Leon, any discussion? All in favor? We have policy number 5156, student nutrition and wellness. Can I, this is to adopt, can I have a motion to approve this policy as presented? Moved by Leon. Any discussion on this policy?
Any way that that would open the door for students to take a course or being educated on how they could lose weight? We have programs for all kinds of problems, but we shouldn't be, don't have anything for. Would this be something that we could use to offer a class on that or?
I wasn't in policy, but I don't want to sound like I'm approving a, do you think that would fall more on their curriculum than, than policy?
Health and wellness committee would address that through the curriculum.
I'll remember.
Any other discussion?
I'll just beat the same drum on, you know, wanting to also consider compliance after these policies are passed. To be checking in on compliance, this is the policy that articulates the requirement to offer 30 minutes of moderate to rigorous activity for K through 12 per day. We've had some good conversations with Superintendent Payne about, you know, we can check the box by saying we offer athletics, but there are gaps between seasons. And we've talked about how many students actually take advantage of those athletic programs, especially if you consider multi-season athletes. So in favor of the policy, just want to put that on our radar to continue to think about compliance.
I think we said, I could be wrong, but that's where it's somebody after school, like the offerings for middle school, after school.
Beth, we had this, we started this conversation at the elementary school board, right? As we were talking about this policy. Was that, they start to blend, sorry.
We start, no, we talked about it at this meeting when the policy was born because, because middle and high school don't have recess, right? Recession is the obvious like way to, to meet the standard. And then we revisited it at the policy committee meeting.
Oh, thank you. So, so just to reference, and Beth already covered this for some folks, the educational quality standards. It says each school K through 12 will provide at least two physical education classes per week. Each school grades nine through 12 has a one and a half year of physical education or equivalent requirement. We meet that in this district, but that's the checking of the box. The second paragraph is the one we were having a conversation about. You shall offer options to students, sorry, the boys stated, grades K through 12 to participate in 30 minutes of physical activity within or outside of the school day. Physical activity may include recess, movement built into the curriculum. It should not, it does not replace physical education class. So we talked about, we did talk about sports, we did talk about extended school day activities that might be more of what the middle school offers. But we did talk about why do kids not access this? What's the barrier to them having those opportunities? So that's an opportunity to have a conversation going forward. Now, I did share that with Melissa Senical, Director of Curriculum, and I also talked to Ashley Walker, who is the school nurse at the middle school, but who is also very much connected to the Health and Wellness Committee. And so I at least started that conversation.
Tim, I can share a bit, in my principal's report, I can also share an additional update about movement in the school day at the middle school now.
All right.
Did I, did we give, did we vote? We have a motion on the table to adopt a 5156, student nutrition and wellness. All those in favor? Okay. We'll move on. This is to warn policy number 6382, home study programs. A motion by, by Leon, by Glenn. Are there any discussions on this policy?
I was asked a question by Beth, Policy Committee with regards to if you're a homeschool kiddo and you're participating in a, in a high school sport as far as bumping a MAU student. So if you bear with me just for a second, I asked for clarification on that point. And this is from Mike Malloy, Athletic Director. Per VPA policies, homeschool students residing in the district are equal, are seen as equal to MAU. They are considered the same, same rights to play sports, participate. Members of a, member to member, so someone who plays for Sacred Heart Highland Hall or BBA, in the case of volleyball, Grace Christian. Those students cannot displace an MAU student. No cuts are allowed if a member to member or private school student is participating. That is not true for homeschool. They are seen as an MAU student. So cuts could be made. It could impact somebody who is attending all day at MAU. If a homeschool kid was captain, you were captain of the team. Just clarify, that was raised in an earlier conversation. I'm happy to repeat that again at the policy.
Tim, I think the discussion that we had at the policy committee, which was pretty in-depth, was around language included in the policy. I, I think the, and I don't have it right in front of me today. Around access and availability of slots. So if you read through the policy, it sounds like home study students have the option to participate in public school activities and extracurriculars as long as there are spaces available. And so the interpretation of the policy committee at our last meeting was that that meant available spaces, like, you know, a, a team that is not making cuts, things like that. So it's, it's, I'm surprised to hear that interpretation, Tim, and it's a little bit different than what the interpretation of the policy committee was.
You may want to invite Mike to join us at the next policy committee, just to talk about policy versus how it's being implemented. Is that okay? Beth, are you all right if I do that, invite him to the next policy committee?
Yeah. And thank you so much for going the extra step, Tim, and looking into the other, the other schools as well and how those are handled. Appreciate it.
This, this policy is being warranted, doesn't it?
Right. All right. So we have a motion to warn the policy. All those in favor? Moving on to 4450, warn the electronic communications between employees and students. Kind of a motion. Okay, Leon. Also, could I combine Glenn? Any discussion on this warning of policy? Can I have a motion to warn policy as presented? I've been warned. Okay. We move on to the administrator's report. Student representatives.
So high school's happy to have one of our two student representatives with us this evening. Our other one is playing a volleyball game tonight at Fitzfield. Tonight we have a junior, Althea Radokia with us. And I'm going to turn it over to Althea.
Hi, yeah, I'm a junior. So do you know, like, slowly it's just gone, things have already gotten kind of busy at MAU. Sports, small sports have started. We've got, I think, boys and girls, soccer and cross country, football, volleyball and golf. A notable mention among those is the girls' varsity golf. There's been a lot of like increased interest and participation. Our homecoming football game is Friday, October 3rd. So please come support us. It would be really fun. Our clubs have also started getting busy. The Drama Club last week had auditions for the Ball musical, which is strapped this year. The performances aren't till November, so it's a government to go. Interact Club has recently formed a relationship with the second congregational church. And you're helping with Sunday Suppers a couple of times a week and those suppers help to support like the underprivileged people in our community. Interact is also helping with Harvest Fest, Superfest and Pancake Breakfast. NHS, National Honor Society is just getting organized this year with new officers since a lot of them graduated last year. And Students Sunday is working hard to organize a lot of upcoming events. The main one is Homecoming, which is Saturday, October 4th. And Spear Week, which is the week before that. I think it's the week of September 29th. Yeah. And on the Friday of that week, we have the pep rally slash scream off, which is the tradition at MAU. We just like, we're usually outside, but if it's, if it's raining or something, we'll be in the gym and it's just whichever grade screams loudest, basically. But it's really fun. Oh yeah. And the seniors will also start painting their parking spots in. The last thing is last May, we have a very high percentage of our AP students pass their exams, which is of course different school, but also for the students because they work really hard all year long. And so the continuation of, like, continuation of these programs and like the support for them is really important. Because it's just like, they're challenging, but they're also really rewarding. I took two APs last year and they were like my favorite class ever. So.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and bringing us the student perspective.
And I, I have to say, I did go to my first football game in probably since my son played. Boy, you guys are louder than ever. It's so coordinated. I was so impressed and so many cheerleaders. 30? Holy crow. Great. And it was win.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the high school's administrative report.
So I will do my best not to be repetitive. So yes, I could for a couple of highlights there. Although I will say, when I ask everybody, pray for good weather for that Friday at the end of the homecoming week. Because the scream off is in the gym, I probably will not be able to hear you at the next board meeting. So just a couple of other highlights, off to a strong start, a lot of positive energy in the building this school year. Althea mentioned Interact Club doing a lot of good volunteering work. Don't speak anymore to that. Thanks for highlighting that. We also have our community based learning program is off to an excellent start. With students working so far in 12 different, with 12 different community partners. More scheduled to start in other locations soon. So we do appreciate the generosity and the support of our community partners helping provide that experience for our students. The football team has started a Patriots Helping Patriots program. Their goal is to support local veterans in the community. They are donating right now $1,020 from a recent fundraiser that they helped to the Vermont Veteran Home to help with creating a new activities kitchen. So I'm talking with Coach Gordon today, who's mentioning how the players and team, they're extremely grateful for having that opportunity to go pay it forward. On some future highlights. Next Wednesday, we have half day at the high school. So just a little logistical information about that. So dismissal for students is at 11:05 on our half days. Teachers will stay for the full day. We'll have in-service in the afternoon. The high school is hosting the middle school during that in-service. So we'll bring Mr. McGuire and his staff down the hill, join us, part of a district wide SEL professional learning day. Proud to say that this professional learning, all of the, the PL is being delivered by SVSD staff. So not outside contractors, anything like that. They are all facilitating sessions on various SEL topics for the rest of their colleagues. Staff are able to choose their sessions that they are most interested in attending. And looking forward to that. That same day. So next Wednesday is kind of a busy day. That evening, we have our open house scheduled. Board welcoming, welcoming families into the building. It is not a traditional parent teacher conference event. At the high school, we'll run our open house and we'll begin with offering dinner to families in the cafeteria from 5:00 to 5:30. Also during that time, they can get dinner, meet and greet, socialize. And we're also going to have extracurricular informational tables available for clubs and activities that we're offering at the school this year. So advisors for those clubs would be available. This group of families will have the information out for them to, to look at. Then families will have the balance of the evening to visit classrooms and teachers, walking through their student schedule to get a feel for it. We'll end the evening with our Title One informational meeting and dessert at 7:00. So looking forward to that. Should be a good night for all. We already spoke to the homecoming week. And did you mention the dance on Saturday? Yep, okay. So end of the week. Looking forward after that meet, MAU is going to be bringing a team to the Unified Champion Soccer Tournament at Norwich University on October 7th. Schools all over the state are represented and it's going to be MAU's third year for that event. And just a little note, so some people may have received our robocall phone notification on Monday afternoon for a planned emergency egress drill this week. Just to note that that is just a normal fire drill notification that we have. Sometimes that vocabulary gets questioned. So.
Move on to the middle school. Yeah. So thank you for covering a couple of things. It's helpful. Positive start at the middle school, same thing, you know, that Adam said, you know, it seems that I've had several staff members come up, say, you know, kind of say something to the effect of, it's been like our smoothest start so far. So that's a really positive thing. Happy to hear that from people. We had our open house already, Thursday, September 11th, last Thursday. We had our annual title meeting before that, then we went into our open house. We had about 300 people, I can say at least 300 people in attendance for our open house. I was really pleased with that. About 520 students in the building. So it was, you know, it was well attended, put up 300 chairs. They were almost all full and then people were continuing to come in afterwards. We had tables set up there for our prevention coordinator, our school-based clinicians. And PTSA, PTSA was generating a lot of interest from, you know, for new members. And I, I was approached by several teachers after the open house, especially teachers that taught, you know, unified classes or intervention classes and things like that. And they were just really thrilled about the number of parents, family, students that they had visiting their classrooms again, saying that it was like some of the highest numbers that they've ever had. So that was really promising. So the open house, we're, we're going to be doing our MAP testing, our measures of academic progress, district level assessment that we take your guess. Well aware of the assessment at this point. We're doing our ELA test on the 23rd and then our mathematics test on the 25th. Always want to give a shout out to the testing coordinator because they work a lot of behind the scenes hours to like set up, you know, your testing environments, figure out the groupings. There's a lot of work that goes into preparing and facilitating the test and doing makeups. So Rachel Kip is my testing coordinator and I'm very lucky to have her in that position. Like I said, it'd be very hard to keep up with, with all of that organized testing. And then we, I've told the board before that we, we have really been leaning into some growth celebrations, following testing, some school-wide celebrations and team level celebrations. And that seems to be a real motivator for middle school students to try on the test. And we found when they put their best effort in, we see the growth. So we're going to continue to do that. Last year I came to talk to the board about some concrete pieces that were around the out, they're like concrete slabs that are on the side of the wall around the exterior of the middle school. They're about two feet by two feet roughly. And the request was, hey, and the original design of the school was for these to have some artwork on it. They're, you know, of the school was for these to have some artwork on it. They're, you know, to be painted on that. So I have a mural club at the middle school and the board was uh, gracious to say, yeah, that sounds like a good plan and approve that. And uh, we have our first artwork popping up around the exterior of the middle school. Um, there's a, a nice trout. Uh, out front, there's, they're all kind of like Vermont based theme uh, pictures. There's a cow. There's a lovely bird on a branch. Um, I'm uh, rooting for a nice buck, but we'll see if I, I get my wish. There's one right not too far from my office. Um, but hey, they're, they're coming around and I, I would encourage you to check them out. They're really, they're really well done. They're getting a lot of recognition and comments. And so it's pretty cool. They're all student generated articles. Um. I wanted to share that I've continued to commit this year to a newsletter to go home to students start. Just as well, but really directed towards families. Um, right now I commit to sending this newsletter every other month. Um, has a lot of different information in, in there. Um, you know, everything in this first uh, month, I, I sent it out at the very end of August, the first week of school for, for the September newsletter. Um, everything from drop off procedures, yam pouch information, uh, important dates of a running calendar, clubs and activities, just, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, again, just a nice way to try to increase communication with families. Um. Speaking of clubs and activities, we're going to be uh, starting our clubs and activities very soon and working with Kelly Brooks, the uh, site coordinator kind of oversees uh, the twenty first century grant that funds uh, some after school programs and uh, clubs and activities, which is, you know, funded out of the uh, MAU budget. Um, he is working on sign, I've met with him. He's working on signups and generating, you know, lists a little different than high school in that we do signups with students because developmentally in the age, just making sure that we have permissions to be there and people know where they are after school. Um, so we're going to be sending out information uh, for signups in the next week or two. And uh, we're going to be beginning programs either on October sixth or Tuesday, uh, Tuesday, October fourteenth, uh, because we're off that Monday. And then I just wanted to put a, a little uh, note in uh, about the movement discussion that we were having a little while ago. Um, so uh, you, if you recall in our schedule, we have an exploratory block, which is like a student interest block and it cycles through the year. Um, we used to do a procedure where students signed up for different offerings. Um, it, it got to be pretty complicated to manage, you know, students signing up for different offerings six times throughout the year. Um, and there is some contractually contractual pieces to be aware of because it's a uh, student contact time for teachers, not time that can have a prep attached to it. So we shifted gears a little bit this year, um, and moved to some pre-planned offerings. Uh, six different offerings throughout the year. So there's, it shifts uh, once each trimester. Yeah. So there's two offerings each trimester. And one of the offerings is a, a movement exploratory. So all students in the middle school uh, participate in that for one sixth of the year. And there's various options during the movement exploratory of, you know, walking options, disc golf options, uh, Gaga ball. Um, there's some other uh, uh, choices as well. Um, so again, you know, I know we've talked about, you know, some of the after school offerings, the PE component of it. Um, we've talked about, you know, the movement between classes, but we're, we're, you know, just kind of trying to increase the, the movement of students during the day. And this is just another piece that we've uh, we've layered into it. So it just, it made me think of it when the conversation came up a while ago. All I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. Uh, I've made a promise that every time I meet with the board, I'm going to give you an update on the latest things uh, involved around act seventy three and the uh, the effort to reform education or revamp education in the state of Vermont. Uh, last Thursday, November the eleventh, I met with a statewide uh, group of superintendents uh, in Rutland. Uh, we had small group discussions about uh, the various parts of the legislation and how it impacts planning. It was nice to talk to folks who are superintendents of large districts, small districts, supervisory unions. Some folks are veterans, some people are brand new. Um. That will carry over to our, we, we meet uh, in a quarterly fashion. So it was just good to touch base with folks. I have nothing to report out on that as the Vermont Superintendent's Association is kind of forming its uh, talking points moving into the December, January timeframe as many of courses anticipating the maps and all that good stuff. Uh, I have a meeting this Friday, the nineteenth with the Rural School and Community Alliance. Uh, they've been gracious enough to invite me to participate in an online meeting. I'm interested in being a member. Uh, I know that there are superintendents in the state who have uh, worked with their boards to write letters of support. I'm going to attend this meeting. I'll come back to the SU meeting and report out and I'll get directions from the board, how they would like to uh, proceed. Uh, and also wanted to say that I've been attending almost feels like weekly, but uh, weekly meetings hosted by the Secretary of Education and her staff, various topics. Uh, the latest one was about graduation requirements as there is a timeline for that as well. Uh, they laid out what they're doing right now, collecting a lot of information. There will be opportunities for the community and schools to give feedback starting in December through the spring. So I will try to update that as we move along. The second item regarding uh, this is the MAU middle school, just want to let the board be aware. The security system, camera system at the middle school is ten years old, well past its useful life according to the IT. It makes uh, it's difficult to replace parts. Uh, in May of this year, the camera system sustained a complete failure. IT was able to apply a Band-Aid. That is a highly technical term they've been included in this. Uh, the camera system is continuing to experience significant issues that are impacting the overall function and performance, causing issues for the security team's operations on a daily basis. Uh, this is from Adam at Suzer IT, who is our contractor for technical support. They will be publishing an RFP for one-to-one replacement of the camera system. A walkthrough was completed in May to ensure the camera system that we are going out for would adequately meet the needs of the building. We will be coming back, Renee and I in October, uh, with a request um, for the board to consider to replace that. I will just say this, that uh, the camera system is vital to security, it's daily operations, both buildings I've familiarity with. And I wanted to say, just because the middle school is new, doesn't mean the camera system doesn't need to be replaced, but we will bring that for your consideration in October. Just more information than anything for a conversation. And then the last thing is a shameless plug for myself. I want to thank uh, Katie West. As we sat down in the first weeks of my uh, new role here in the superintendency, I told her I'm already missing kids. I miss not having students running around in the hallway, giving me a sense of, you know, uh, purpose during the day. So she and I came up with an idea. And she helped me film the first one. Uh, we're calling it simple questions with Superintendent Mr. Payne. Uh, we've had our first filming with Avery Kamarda, who is a junior at the uh, at the high school. And the idea behind this is we will travel to different schools each month. We're going to ask eight similar questions. We may flex that a little bit. Uh, our next, uh, I think the next school we're going to is uh, Monument, I think is where I'm going. And we're going to be filming that this week. It's a lot of fun. Uh, it's a lot of fun for me. I don't know about if it's a lot of fun for you. It's a short clip. You can find us on the YouTube. Like I said, simple questions with superintendent to paint. Um, two hundred views so far. I feel like, hey, you know, it's all right. We'll go with that. But Avery was fantastic. I want to also thank Katie for um, shooting it, editing it, posting it up. She has also launched a, a podcast for the S V S U. Adam was featured on that along with Heiss. Now it's a really good conversation. I'm not as adept at the podcast, so next month I'll come back and I'll tell you where you can find that. Uh, Tony and his daughter are the subjects of the latest versions. So we'll make sure we push that out for folks to see too. So a nice plug for our communities and thank you for everybody, the, the students and the staff who are participating in the effort. That's it for me.
Can I just say that when I received the uh, email notification, it still says Superintendent Colkeen.
Oh, yes. That has been addressed. I appreciate that. Uh, yes, we had to send out a uh, unfortunately, we had to send out a note. Uh, and uh, while the message inside is signed by myself, it is sent by James Colkeen. So IT assures me that next time it will be me and Beth has her hand up.
Yeah. Uh, it was fun to see the simple questions with Superintendent Payne on Facebook. And so thanks for doing that. Um, I heard through the grapevine that there's a legislative breakfast happening and I'm not in the next couple of weeks, maybe the first week of October. And my question was whether that is only for like elementary school administrators or who the intended audience is for that.
Oh, excellent question. Let me just grab that really quick. I'm not checking my social feed. Um, the legislative breakfast is October sixth. It's from eight to ten. It is, it is traditionally not been a public meeting. Beth, it is mostly for board members, uh, administrators and legislators to participate. So I will make sure that that gets out to everybody to participate in that. We recognize that the timing is difficult for folks who have a nine to five commitment. Um, I'm just honoring the tradition of when it was hosted in the past and we can take feedback going forward, but October sixth from eight to ten.
Yeah, we could definitely get and, and how to respond for the attending.
Yeah, absolutely.
I used to receive the method, the emails from Superintendent's office. I do not anymore and that's trouble because I had a little board break. If I could get back on that list, that would be great. Um, that was the first thing I had. The second question I had, I thought that you said um, at the last meeting, you were going to update this board on where we were at with super, with the assistant superintendent's position.
I wasn't sure if we were going to cover it under the S V S U. Item of it, but like we can, it's fine. It's fine either way. I don't, I can do it now to that little one. If you want to just go ahead with it, that's.
Excellent question. Let's do that. Uh, so again, just for folks who may be new to the process, we have posted for an interim assistant superintendent. These, it would serve through, they, the, the individuals would serve through June of twenty twenty six. So it's a uh, it's a one-year position. With the idea that we would post a full posting in December and then do a January, February search, full blown search for an assistant superintendent in a permanent position. Uh, closing date for that application was last Friday. Screening committee met today with Nick Galt and did first pass through the applicants. And the next step is that that committee will meet and have interviews with candidates.
Because I have a follow-up question to that. So we have a process in place. I'm not calling it a policy. I'm not calling it a procedure. I don't know what it's called. We have a process. We worked that process through multiple positions last year. But one seemed to work. So what I'm asking is that the process need to be changed. Or, because if it doesn't need to be changed, we would have an assistant now, right? Because I know the people on that screening committee did a lot of work, held a lot of meetings, met with a lot of people. I do know that someone was, people were put forward and nothing happened. So I don't know if the process needs to change or I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know.
Uh, this may be directed more towards board, like the board members as a whole, right? Like in terms of the process.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I kind of, I'm kind of piggybacking to it. Maybe if the process is looked at like, um, I think that we as a board or the boards collectively should be thinking about like transparency in these processes, you know, right? I've um, in this case, like I didn't participate, uh, you know, I see what's on the agendas, um, you know, and I've had multiple people come up to me as a board member and with various levels of speculation about uh, what uh, Superintendent Payne, you know, whether he wants to go it alone or he has, you know, his um, saving some cash. Uh, you know, whatever the reason is that we're at this point, like there is a lack of transparency in these processes. And I think if we look at it, you know, um, from my, and then just one more personal aspect to it. Uh, I as a board member would like to see the, our new superintendent um, move forward strategically and um, engage both with what's happening in our state and like what's happening in our community. And in order to that, we need to provide him the resources in order to be able to do that. If we can't provide the resources, then we cannot expect him to strategically place like work in that space. He can't be in both, you know, like there's too much going on with our districts, but that, that's just my opinion. So I would ask that the S V S U thinks about that for the next time.
And I, I would share, I am absolutely not willing to go it alone. I heard that in the community too. Like, do you get a cut of what you say? No.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm strongly advocating for assistant superintendent. We're a big enough district in the state of Vermont. You need the help, especially anticipating the change that could come down the pipe for us. Uh, I participated in both of those searches in the spring, still wearing a principal's hat, I think. Uh, it was good to go through the process. Uh, definitely got feedback from the facilitator and Nick. Uh. For the next time that we do it, I think it addresses some of the questions about uh, transparency about what the decision-making was. So. Understood. But as a part, I want to be clear, I was a participant of that. I would be leading the final on this. I would work closely with the chair for transparency.
Any other thoughts around that?
We'll just go, I think, just to go, essentially this could move to the next item on the agenda, but um, as the chair of the um, S V S U board, uh, I, I've certainly heard, heard the feedback here. Um, and will do, you know, whatever possible in my role to help, help make sure that the the process for the interim superintendent, as well as the process for um, the the upcoming assistant super, assistant superintendent, I should have said, a cup, upcoming assistant superintendent search uh, plays out to, to ensure that it is as transparent as we all want it to be. Um. Go ahead. If I can go into the next part of a update from the S, from the S V S U. Um, you know, there's a number of board members that, that sit on this board that also sit on the ASD board. Um, and have uh, presence on, on the S V S U board. Um, and I, you know, I'll publicly thank all of them as part of my MAU uh, board update. And that the last two meetings, we have had marathon, and that's probably putting it um, lightly marathon meetings. Um, where we're doing some really, really excellent work, work that I've been wanting to do for, for quite some time and that I'm, I'm, I know that the end result is going to be something that, you know, we can all be proud of, but um, we're really working to set strategic goals for the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board. And doing that in partnership with the superintendent because, because I feel those goals should frame some of the goals for the superintendent. Um, this isn't being done in a vacuum. And you know, my main message today is this isn't being done in a vacuum and that um, there will be parts of that, that there will be opportunities to, we will present these goals to each of the individual boards that, that feed the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board. And we will go through um, similar exercises with the, those boards and those board chairs too. Um, so that there's hopefully a bit of a, much more of a waterfall and a, and a cohesiveness um, between all of our boards that we're working towards single goals and that the superintendent um, has clear, has these clear, has clear goals um, from which to work. Um, that, you know, everything lines up and that there's not, he, he or she, if there were a future, future woman in the role, um, wouldn't feel like they have um, to do different things.
Yeah, going for, just to play off what Scott's saying, I would like, I'm going to leave the S V S U report as an item on the agenda going forward because I think having, you know, I know everybody's on various boards, but having that in like just an update in this space will help us be informed and understand the direction so that we can have, you know, we have a complicated system and we should try to be as cohesive as possible.
And that's, that's, that's the goal here is that hopefully we can make a complicated system a little less so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Don't forget.
Yeah. Um, questions for Scott or any other S V S U board, your comments that.
And if I missed, if I missed anything glaring that other members of the, the S V S U board would love to, would like to add, you know, uh, um, feel free.
No, I, I just think that you're a hundred percent right, Scott. I think the meetings that we've been having have been great. We were having discussions that should have been um, had quite a while ago. So I'm really excited about the work that we're giving it.
Great.
Um, well, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I do. Oh, okay. Yeah. I just want to, I'm sorry. 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 Hold on.
Sorry, not. I want to publicly, um, thank Miles, um, Smith, um, of M A U freshman. Um, I, I think what he did, I don't know if everybody's familiar. He literally, I think, helped save a woman from a burning fire. So I wanted to make sure that I publicly thanked him for not being out of sleep the night before the first day of school and alerting the fire department immediately. And I think he should be commended. That's all.
Thank you. This one thing, we are.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Uh, because I'm on two different boards, Southwest Vermont Career Development Center and this one. And we use the meet, uh, policy committee on this board the first Monday of the month. And we were meeting at the Southwest Vermont, uh, board the first Monday of the month as well. But we met at ten o'clock in the morning and this one was meeting at four thirty. I forgot, totally forgotten about it. At the, at the beginning of the year, times came around, they voted to make, move the meeting to four thirty. So now I got two four thirty meetings in which I can't be on a, uh, committee and a regular meeting at the same time. And so I'm going to have to get off of the board because I can't meet policy and S V S U at the same time. I'm in, I give Southwest Vermont Career Development Center.
With your blessing, I'd like to bring it up as an agenda item within my position here so that we could retain your decades long participation in that.
What?
With your blessing.
When is your next policy move?
Not until October.
Do you want to, I'm not sure how that will work too with Sandy being.
Regional Technical Center, policy fill-in, off date.
With that other announcement this evening, there could be further effect or not as well. But if, again, I'd be disappointed to see your wisdom go elsewhere. Then I would look to your, or at least put it out for, um,
Are you willing to see if they could, or I mean, it's not something we can make a decision here. I don't know, but I would speak.
Yes, yes. There's a lot of meetings taking place, but then you.
It's a lot of dudes.
That's the agenda and so forth. Yeah, time, so forth.
The chair and we can figure that out. Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Well, but you can just let us know otherwise. It doesn't work. Thanks, Liam. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll maybe.
Wait, sorry. Oh, I just want to put in the plug that, um, especially following up on Susan's um, comment about the football game that the Booster Shack is still looking for volunteers um, to serve food and sling candy bars and sodas during some of those games. Um, you can't really see the game from the Booster Shack, which is a bummer, but you can see the scoreboard and it's a ton of fun. So I would encourage folks to sign up for a shift.
It is a lot of fun.